7:05 PM, we'll start the meeting. Call it to order. I would just like to say that we are recording for Massachusetts General Law. We like to make that clear. If anyone else that is attending is recording, just need to let me know and then everyone will understand that that's happening. Appreciate that. So first thing we need to do is we have approval of prior minutes and thanks to Colleen, we have some minutes to approve. So the minutes that we are approving are from August 22nd. So those are in our folder for tonight's meeting. People, and I don't know if-
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 22nd, 2019, January 2nd.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Okay, and we're gonna have one who's not present yet, so we'll just call her present once she gets here.
Yeah.
Very good. And Mauro will not be here, as I understand it this evening. All right, very good. So I'm gonna move into the Chairperson's report, so I have just a few things here. First off, the School Committee, can you all hear me through this? Is it allowing you to hear me? Okay. The School Committee has completed its review of the complaint made by a member of the public against a School Committee member. That review concluded with a finding that there was no violation of any School Committee policy. The School Committee, as has been discussed publicly, is working on revising and developing policies surrounding issues such as social media, which hopefully will provide guidance, guidelines, and expectations to all public officials and staff. And that has been an important priority for us in any case, and we're working on that in the Policy Subcommittee and we'll bring it to the larger group as we move forward. The Beacon Telethon kickoff is tomorrow, so School Committee will be able to provide donations. So if anyone would like to pledge something, I could then present the, here's the School Committee's-
Donation.
Donation. So, yeah, so that you can-
I have an idea.
No pressure about what we've done.
You do Venmo or PayPal or what?
I do Venmo.
Venmo, are you?
I'm Venmo you.
I'm Venmo you.
Me too.
Bobby! There aren't many of us.
Just all for us.
So, yes.
Except for the whole audience that was-
Yeah, yeah.
Just so you know.
Yeah. Okay, so, in any case, here we go. So that's tomorrow, and there's-
It's the old-fashioned way, I'm gonna give you a kiss.
Oh wow, look at that. There's the Annual and Special Town Meeting coming up on Monday, May 18th, 7:00 PM, Fowler Auditorium, so I just wanted to mention that. And also, I saw, if you all saw, we have a preschool expansion survey to share out, so I thought I'd mention that, that that is going out not just to our community but surrounding communities as well, to try to look for interest in, yeah, okay, very good. So I wanted to mention that. And then the last thing that I would like to do as part of my report-
And I do, just to put a mark, I do have some members' comments that will include questions about the pre-K also, survey.
Very good, okay. And then I have here a letter from the Screening Committee that I'm going to read to you all now as part of my Chair Report. So this is two members of the Maynard School Committee, Ari the Screening Committee Activities and Recommendations, dated December 5th, 2019. We are pleased to report on the activities of the Maynard Superintendent Search Screening Committee. Over the past three weeks, the Screening Committee met on several occasions to review applications and interview candidates for the position of Superintendent of Schools. We are very pleased with their overall quality of the applicant pool. There were 29 completed applications for the position. The Screening Committee reviewed all 29 applications and subsequently selected a number of candidates who were invited to meet with the Screening Committee for a preliminary interview. Following the preliminary interviews and after much discussion and consideration, the Screening Committee voted during its meeting on November 21st, 2019, to recommend four candidates for further consideration by the Maynard School Committee. The four candidates listed in alphabetical order are: James Adams, Superintendent, Ashland Public Schools; John Bucky, Principal, Nantucket Public Schools; Brian Haas, Executive Director, Abbey Kelly Foster Charter Public School; Michael Richard, Superintendent, West Springfield Public Schools. On behalf of the School Committee and the Town of Maynard, we would like to thank the members of the Screening Committee for the many hours they devoted to reviewing applications, interviewing candidates, and deliberated during the deliberating, during the preliminary selection process. The conversations were lively, insightful, and courteous. It was truly a pleasure to work with this group of dedicated citizens. And this is respectfully submitted by our Chair, Lydia Clancy, and our, what would you have been, our member-
Representative Mary Brantley.
So, there you have it. So we, later on in the agenda, will be discussing our next steps in relation to, in relation to the search. So that's it for my Chairperson's report. So now we'll move into the Students' Report. Who's reporting tonight? All right. Patrick, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so busy, well, it was nice because we had the snow days, but it's still a very busy time of year. Oh, there we go. These are new, by the way. Okay, so Spirit Week, that ended Tuesday before the Thanksgiving break. Seniors, of course, won because we are seniors. We had lots of spirit. We got a perfect 40 out of 40 points, and I think we had a great lip sync. Me and Talal were in it. It was, it'll be on YouTube eventually.
A demo, or no?
What?
No demo tonight, or?
No, 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 sorry. Not now. Too tired for that, but you'll see it on YouTube. Hopefully next week, after the telethons done and everything.
Can't wait.
Even the teachers submitted a lip sync this year. They didn't do it live, but they put up a video on the projector and we all watched it. It was pretty good, it was interesting. Let's see. So the Thanksgiving game, we won. That's great news. Unfortunately, it did start an hour and a half late because there were no officials, and it was the last day or last time for the band seniors to perform at a pep band game. So that was fun, but it also ended early because everyone had to leave. So pep band was only half of it instead of the full game. The sports award banquet was last night. The fall Letterman jackets were handed out, and it was sponsored by the Booster Club. And the basketball teams are starting up in the gym. They're practicing right now, actually, when we walked by. So NHS Homecoming was over. It was attended by over 100 students. The library project of reorganizing all of the books in the MHS library is still going on. They were working today, getting, just moving stuff around for the telethon, because can't have kids sleeping on books. Let's see. New service projects. Emily Tumino and Riley Hines are hosting a Buddy Dog Drive in their boxes for donations will be out tomorrow. And Talal and Lilly are doing a musical instrument drive where they'll be accepting kids' instruments, real instruments, and other musical accessories in boxes will be out soon as well. WAVM, obviously, the telethon is tomorrow. It's very stressful because we had the two snow days. We lost a lot of time for prep, so that's been chaotic at the least. And that's gonna be starting live tomorrow at 8:00 PM on local TV as well as our YouTube channel, WAVM Productions, also on livestream.com. You can donate online at donorbox.org/2019bst. And you can also get all sorts of other information, along with everything I just said, on wavm.org. And that's all I have to say. Are there any questions?
Good luck with getting to the finish line.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here tonight.
Of course, yeah.
Nonetheless.
Couldn't miss it.
Appreciate that. Any questions?
Thank you, Pat.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Then, do you want to just move into the next item we wanted to put with the Student Report, was consideration of the School Committee to new venue.
Yeah. And I did find, and shared it with the Committee this evening, what was the previously done, I think Bethel, you had shared this a while ago, or?
Well, it was thanks to Pat, Pat had done this analysis last year, to look at the possibility and the pros and cons of having relocation to like MHS Media Center. So I think everyone has the-
Do you have this looking?
The document. So-
Do you want to just get some feedback?
He, the, yeah, the bottom line is like the MHS Media Center felt like it was, it's a small space despite having, being a nice space. The MHS Auditorium.
I was, I just was looking at the cafeteria as the only really viable consideration.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
And is Town Hall not an option?
Uh, no, we didn't have that on here.
I don't- I think that's something that we, I don't know if it's possible and what the availability is, when they have equipment on site.
And it only requires one student.
And it's live streaming?
Well, I think Colleen had a good point. Do you want to-
Yeah.
-to share your thoughts?
What are your thoughts?
Historically, it's always been where central office is located, used to be Coolidge, because we're sometimes working up to the last minute. We have accessibility to equipment, to copy machines. If a projector breaks, I can run upstairs and grab one.
Colleen, can you get a little closer?
Oh, sorry.
Is that you?
But we have all the equipment here that's very accessible to us, where we wouldn't have as much accessibility at another school or at Town Hall.
And so that would be a benefit of having it stay here-
Correct.
-as opposed to moving it anywhere. And I think the consideration really is about the timing and the end-of-day breakdown that, I don't know if maybe they want to elaborate a little bit more.
Yeah, I was wondering if, from your perspective, that would be helpful, just to-
Yeah, this really impacts this consideration strongly with your feedback.
It's geared toward you guys, so.
Yeah, so we bring this equipment every, for the Committee. We, we don't keep it here or anything. We come up with a crew for Thursday after school to bring, to get all the equipment, bring it down here, set it up. Then we have a crew to work it, and then we have a crew to, or Friday after school to come back, get everything, and then put it all away.
So after the meeting, you leave it here and someone else picks it up on Friday?
Yeah, so we pack it up, put it in the corner, and wait for someone out on Friday to pick it up.
Okay. And so what is the breakdown that, in after our meeting, time-wise, that requires you, you all to stay here after we leave? Is it really short, or is it?
It's pretty short. It just takes us like, I don't know, 10 minutes to break down everything.
Yeah, but we also have to stay for the recording and audio monitoring, and it's not just the breakdown.
Right, it's the longer piece when our meetings go long.
Right.
Yeah.
I heard that back in the day, they used to just leave, right?
Yeah.
They were just like, we're done, we're gonna go computer meeting.
It used to be at nine o'clock, you guys took off, and, you know, if we had to continue. So, it was a long time ago, but, so if we could make a concerted effort to end our meetings at 10 o'clock, as I always say, no good decisions are made after 10 o'clock anyway, would that benefit you? Would that be something that would work, or would you really prefer us to do it at the high school?
Yeah, it's not, it's really not about where it is, it's about how long a student is here.
Most locations work for us. Just the time, we gotta set up, break down, and take it back, and like run the event.
So if it were at Town Hall and there was like, and the equipment's there, then would that actually be helpful?
I'm not familiar with Town Hall.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with Town Hall. We have like a designated person who does that. As far as I know, it would be easier on the tech side, so we wouldn't have a break, we wouldn't have a setup or breakdown. It would just be one person goes a little early and sets up the microphones and stuff. That's definitely an option. I don't know, I would have to talk to her about it.
Would we want to maybe think about, for one, I don't even know if it's availability is feasible on our end, so maybe it sounds like, get two different feedbacks. So feedback, you might be able to get internally from your team on if that, how that would work, and then we separately can explore if it's even an option to-
Yeah.
Right.
Even want an option to, just weighing other considerations, because we are often trying to get information right up until-
Exactly.
Right, and maybe it depends on like, you know, what meeting, you know, if there is, if it is, you know, a meeting that might run a little bit longer, maybe having, if it's one person, you know, it might free them instead of having two people attend the meeting. I don't know.
The continuity, though, is really-
Yeah.
-good. So people always know that they're gonna come to one place versus, you know, us changing it, because, you know, people don't leave, and so.
The other thing that I think I want to just have in mind, too, is that it sounds like what you're saying is that the breakdown is not a big deal. It's really the length of the meeting.
Yeah.
And it also, though, does sound like setup takes a little bit, because-
Yeah, it's, that is a-
But it's not.
Yeah, if there was no, if there was no setup or breakdown, that would be like a bonus, but we're looking at length as the issue.
But the, Jeff, okay, okay.
In our eyes.
So if we're committing to 9:30 to 10 o'clock?
I'd like to see us commit to 9 to 9:30 if we could. That's what I'd like to say. I don't, I respectfully understand that you want to say we need to go to 10, but I'd like just to shoot for 9, and at the latest 9:30, and then if it turns out that we have a meeting that goes longer, it happens. But that, and if possible, we know that and we plan for it, and they know that as well.
Maybe it might be helpful to also share, and I don't know if they get the agenda ahead of time, or if we could, we envision this meeting might be longer, so at least you might be able to prepare. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, I mean, I usually do look at the agendas before.
Because I know we have a lot of subject matter in the next, you know, I mean, just like we've had this year, that are really intense with, you know, the building and superintendent search and some of those pieces that I'd say it'd be hard to cut at a 9 o'clock end time, per se, but I think given you a heads up, like, this might be more engaging of a meeting, especially the public questions or-
Yeah, right.
So strive for 9 to 9:30, worst case 10 o'clock.
Does that sound workable?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, where 10 o'clock would be like, we're cutting, or whatever's in the agenda would be-
Yeah, we have to-
We'll have to table it for the next meeting.
We've had some discussions. We're gonna try to really take a look at, at how we structure the meetings, not perhaps put three presentations in one meeting. Try to get things down to one, occasionally two, but for the most part, maybe just one presentation a meeting.
And I think this year has been just learning that, and also, some people, with different months, were not able to do it, so we kind of shifted a little bit, so.
Right. And also, we've come off of a very unusual year that was a very intense one for you all included. Like, that's something I feel like, like, that it was kind of a given for those that were more centrally involved in, by the intensity, but you all had to be here for the, any, however long it went, despite the fact that this isn't, you know, we choose this as adults who have other things in our lives that we're doing, and then, you know, people were the professionals who were committed to being here and seeing through something that's difficult, but you all have many other things and commitments in your lives. And so the fact that last year you stood through what you had to do, and it's just laudable. And we have to make sure they're honoring and respecting your time.
Yeah, and that's in line with what they do at the town.
I just got emotional about it, because it was-
It's a very good point.
Yeah, no, and I think that pretty much is what the town does, the BOs, you know, when agendas started going, they will just table something, and like 10 o'clock is their, I think their latest cutoff as well.
And maybe we have a vote on what we table. We have to decide what that's going to be as we see that the time's coming to a close, but, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sounds great. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
And thank you for all of those days where you've had to stay late. I appreciate it.
All right, so speaking of, we're right on time, people. All right, so thanks for going with our-
Okay. Maynard High School is pleased to announce that 23 of our seniors received the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship this year. This scholarship entitles the recipient's credit towards tuition at Massachusetts State Colleges or Universities. Students have, would have performed at an advanced category in three of the high school state assessments in English, Language Arts, Mathematics, or Biology, and proficient or advanced in two of the state assessment tests. So I'm gonna give you the names of the students, but I'm also putting it into my, it's gonna be on the website as well as my newsletter. So if you see these people, well, give them congratulations. Matthew Antonio, Alyssa Borges, Abigail Cannadella, Noah DeCastro, Kathleen Den, John Egan Newt, Egan Guess, I'm not even, I'm gonna slaughter.
Anna Guess.
Anna Guess, yes, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I practiced, but I don't think I did it right. Kayla Hydman, Riley Hines, Aaron Jacob, Michael Kazakowicz, Sydney Lucas Jacobson, Ethan Lucier, Jenny Mannion, Emily Osen, Talia Sadeke, Kendra Smith, Tyler Steed, Owen Sullivan Dale, Sarah Seinen, Owen Thayer, and Emily Tumino. So they will be out on the, on the website to take a look at them. We also have some exciting news from our music department, Tuari Kerkakiki, that one, there was no way I was getting that one. I tried. Pat O'Neil and Liz Freeman, they were accepted to the CDMMEA Senior Festival. They received score sheets and ensemble sheet placements in the mail later this week, but three of their MHS core singers made senior districts after a very challenging audition on an Italian art song. They competed against students from approximately 100 high school students from the central area, central area of the state. And so we have two of the 40 best basses in this part of the Massachusetts, and one of the best sopranos. So that, that was gonna tear up when I read that, because that's exciting.
Yeah.
And they've also earned the privilege of singing at a concert in Mechanics Hall in Worcester in January. So that's so exciting. Congratulations. Also, we want some congratulations out to Owen Thayer and Joey DiTavi and Grace Gilligan. They were, they did well as well. Two additional students, Phoebe Cook and Owen Sullivan Dale, also auditioned, and they received excellent scores. Winter sports started this week. Fowler updates. So Fowler After School Club programs continue to grow. On Thursday afternoon, there were 60 students that came to the library to pursue their interests. The clubs included the math team, Roblox, which is a computer and game, which is also our largest club, Magic, the Summoning, it's a role-playing card game, Dungeons and Dragons, Comic Club, Discussion Comic Books and Creating New Ones, the Art Club, the Animal Club, a small group of students who love animals, the Drama and Improv Club, and that is our newest club where students want to write and perform a play.
My daughter is one of the founding members.
Oh, that one. That's, I can't wait to see that one.
It was cool. They came up with it all by themselves, out of the talent show. So I have to say, I did give a thanks, in the spirit of trying to do more thanks, to folks in the district they're doing, to the, it's Mr. Hale, and I'm so, I should remember the other woman's name, but it's so late that I didn't remember, that they, for hosting that they do the talent show, and I think that they just inspire all these, they inspire students to like, go out there and continue being creative. It's very cool.
I would like to address two issues from last meeting, the recess policy. So I just want to read the recess policy to you, just so that everybody has a refresher on that one. The administration of each school will monitor recess practices so that recesses occur during the school day at approximate times, at appropriate times, I'm sorry. The principal of each school will also monitor participation in recess to ensure recess is not being held as a disciplinary consequence, which I know people were concerned with. During periods of extreme cold or inclement weather, the opportunity for recess will be held indoors. But I spoke into the Green Meadow principals and reminded them of the policy, and recess, as far as they know, have not been withheld as a result of disciplinary action. So if anybody is aware of that, please notify Mr. McGillicuddy. He'll be certainly address the issue, but it is not supposed to be held that way. They're not aware of any instances that it has happened. Not to say that it hasn't, they are not aware of it. So please contact your principals. Food service update. The next Wellness Committee, which is on January 23rd, will be looking at the concerns brought up by our latest, by the last school committee at snacks at Green Meadow. So they're gonna talk about that on January 23rd. I've been assured that our breakfast and lunches are complying with USDA and Mass Dietary Guidelines, and all meals are sold with fruit, dairy, vegetables, milk, and juice. Additionally, the snacks that are sold during lunch meet the Massachusetts Nutrition Standards for Competitive Food and Beverages in Public Schools. We've also talked about putting some of those things on Facebook and taking a better look of how we get that information out to parents, and I believe that will be discussed at the Wellness Committee. So those are being addressed.
And I know one thing just to add about the lunch, because I know when I, as a parent, transitioned from Green Meadow to Fowler, there's a big difference in the offerings and also the ability for children to buy things unrestricted in a way that, it's just a very big learning curve for, and I think it's a very surprising learning curve for parents that don't-
I think we've all been there.
Right, I mean, to the point where personally, I have, my daughter's cut off, where she can't charge certain things. I, because it was like a reoccurring theme where she would just be getting ice cream for her meal. And so I just don't, I don't know the best way to approach that, but I feel like parents should be made aware of the difference and how that is, just as a baseline expectation of going into fourth, this is a different, you know, what they'll be allowed to do.
So they do, that was previous, I believe, at Green Meadow, they didn't offer snacks up until this year.
Right, so that's why going to fourth, it was like, whoa.
Well, it's, but, right, previously, but now they have the option for snacks at Green Meadow. The other thing that a parent can do, and I think we've said this at a couple of different meetings, is that if you want a restriction on your child, it's very easy-
Oh, yeah, I did it.
And you just call and put a restriction on their lunch, and then it's not even, it's like horrible for the food service people, but like, they're the bad guy. Because they're saying like, no, you can't have that, you know what I'm saying?
Well, no, because they will say it's your, like, my, you know, and it's, yeah, we've, it really, I think it's helpful if we have some length, or like, the process, if we can just clarify, like, if you are not comfortable with, like, to get that out to parents, because I don't-
Sure, I believe we have before, but we're more than happy to put that up again and maybe update something right on our-
Put that in the newsletter, too.
Yeah.
Putting that together now.
Yeah, that would be helpful, because I think that sometimes you learn by reacting.
Yeah, so it's actually sent out at the beginning of the school year within our thing, but it, within our welcome messages, or whatever that is, that packet. But we can add that right into our-
I don't think people realize it until they, like, until the year goes on, like, oh.
Right, right, right. Until they've used their, you know, their monthly allowance in a week. I've had three, believe me, I know. What are you buying?
Right on here, I don't know how it comes up when they, when they add more money, do they-
When they swipe their card.
Or is that how they do it?
Yeah, they like, when they're right-
Well, at Green Meadow, they swipe a card here, they put in their numbers. So when they put in their number and it verifies who they are, the cashier can see any restrictions that the parent put on the account.
I didn't know if it was something generic that could go to the parents to say, remember if you want to put restrictions on, you know, but-
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the access within-
School bucks?
Yeah, My School Bucks, because that's a third-party that we use.
We changed our email notification. We used to send email notifications right from NutraKids, but it was a manual process that was sometimes forgotten as the week got busy. But we realized that Nutra, My School Bucks will send out low-balance alerts-
Right, right.
-which are automatic. So that's much more-
So maybe we can add it to that.
Yeah, just add language.
Is it hardcoded, or you won't be able to like-
It's very hardcoded. I'd have to take another look at it.
No worries. I just, I thought if it was easy.
But there might be some wiggle room. I can't, I did it in August, I can't quite remember.
Because when people are getting the welcome package, there's so much that, you know.
Oh, yeah, it totally got lost, I know, in me. And then after, when I started realizing why 30 bucks only lasted like four days or something, then I was like, what the hey?
I do think that part of this is, you know, that we can help with families and parents of having those conversations.
Yeah, that's-
Which is part of, that is part of the work, right? So we can send that out at the beginning of the year. We can certainly put things up on the food service website so that we can do that. And then, you know, certainly, we can mention to principals during their back-to-school nights or any of those beginning meetings, that that can be sort of verbally mentioned again, so that families can begin to become more familiar with that as a process. Because I think, you know, yes, it would be nice if we could do some of these like reminders and ongoing messaging, but I think we have a lot of messages that go out to our community already, and I wouldn't want to-
Yeah, it could end up getting lost.
-people stop paying attention to our messages.
Yeah. Very good.
I'm gonna finish, okay?
Yes.
Finish up. Okay. Central Office Updates, just, we are currently exploring a competitive digital literacy grant for our middle school to expand, extend our computer science programs. Adam Steiner, our new Director of Technology, has been in contact with our Fowler principals. He actually contacted us to see if we're interested. The deadline is the 20th, so he took the initiative and met with Jennifer and myself and the Fowler principals. And we're gonna start working on that to see how we can use that. It is a competitive grant, so it will take some work, but he started hitting the ground running, he's not even here yet.
He doesn't start until January 1st.
Exactly. So he's ready to go, so.
We greatly appreciate his initiative.
Yep, CBI Consulting, the structural engineering and architecture firm, spent some time on the Green Meadow roof yesterday afternoon. I do not have any results to share with anybody at this time, but I will keep you inform, keep you updated on information. And people have been walking up on the roof, so, in the last few days.
So this is part of the roof survey?
This is part of the roof survey.
So when we met with Greg yesterday, he did share that their, their deadline to get back to him with the report was December, is December 16. He doesn't know if they're gonna ask for an extension because we lost two days with the snowstorm.
Ironically, due to snow.
Yeah, due to snow. But just to give a general idea of when he's expecting the information back, is December 16.
And as I said, people have been walking up on the roof, we've been looking at it.
Correct. We've been monitoring it on a regular basis and making sure that we're keeping an eye on what the load is there.
Can we get a communication out to the community, though, let them know that there's a structural engineer who's been looking at it recently, because I think that was one of the concerns.
It was a concern. I, yeah, I, we just, that just came in yesterday, so I was talking with Michelle today about that. So we'll definitely put something up.
They just went, so that, the CBI firm just went there yesterday, was that one of their first days of being on site, so. But previous to them being there, we've had our eye on it.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
I'm sure sending out that note, by the way.
Well, I was, I was very, you know, can I, I kept emailing the DPW, can somebody go up, or texting, can somebody go on the roof, can somebody go on the roof, will somebody go up to the roof? So, so the next, same thing, both storms, so. You know, I'm very cognizant of that. I've talked to the teachers, you know, if you- You know, I'm very cognizant of that. I've talked to the teachers, you know, if you, that are in those areas. We're certainly, if you're not feel safe, comfortable, please let us know at any time. They have the opportunity to, to go where they need to go. So we certainly want people to feel safe. So I've made that out, too. I've walked around Green Meadow. Everybody seems pretty, pretty secure right now, but.
Excellent.
All right. So they, they finished doing the surveying themselves? It's just a report?
No, they don't, they're going to be up a few more times. It's only, they only went.
It's like three days, right? It's supposed to be like three days, two of the roof and one of the building?
Yep.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, I mean, it's only been the first time, so I'd like to have a little bit more meat to put out there. Because they're going to ask questions. I don't have anything for them right now. So hopefully, as, as Michelle said, they're due the 16th, but let's see what they can, it is over next week, too. So it's supposed to, it's supposed to get some snow on Friday, to be honest with you. I just saw that.
I think early next week, like maybe by, in the 50s, so maybe some melting.
Let's keep our fingers crossed, so, yeah. But we're, we're monitoring it and, you know, we'll continue to update you with progress as, as we, as we know. Okay? That's, that's my report for the day.
Thank you.
You got it.
So an addendum to my, to the chair report, one comment for yours. I believe the recess policy, because I was on policy committee when we did that, is for elementary schools. So it includes kids that are at elementary, students in elementary at Fowler as well, so.
Oh, yeah, it says, okay, I didn't talk to the Fowler, but I will definitely do that.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
And then the other thing was that the bill, the education bill passed. And we didn't get to officially say that. We don't know quite what that means yet.
Right.
So I'm going to, I think I told you guys last time that my friend in Grafton, he had emailed his state rep. And they gave him a like handy-dandy breakdown of five-year, what they thought that, that the Opportunity Act would mean to them. So I actually just talked to him today because I don't think that he was supposed to tell us that just yet.
Exactly. I was going to say, Michelle.
As I'm like telling everybody.
On television.
Sorry, dude.
And I know we will publicly.
So now I'm going to approach our state rep and ask them to do the same thing for us.
That'll be great.
Thank you.
Hopefully, by the next school committee meeting, I'll be able to show you what they come up with. If we're allowed to, like.
Right, release it.
So the other piece, because it was going to be part of my, my ending comments, but the other piece that's even as important is what do we, what hoops do we have to go through in order to?
Well, they have a plan. You have to do like a plan that's due in a few months. That's every district.
Yeah, every district has to do a plan.
So I don't know how, but if we could get a guideline, they're not going to obviously have it, but if we could get a guideline of when in 2020 they're going to be getting that to us, so if we can stop making plans, that would be great.
Sure, sure.
It seemed like the language was almost similar to like a turnaround plan, kind of like how you close the gaps in your achievement gaps, which we kind of already just recently done. So it'd be great that that would be a foundation for whatever that might be. And, and whatever you're doing for like getting data back, I know that the, the bill, like, it talked about for the seven, because it's a seven-year implementation rollout. I don't know how far down.
So he, what he showed us was the, was five years.
First five years, okay.
But.
I know there's more years after that. That would be, we could still get increases.
Yeah, I'm going to be happy with whatever she gives me, but I will ask for the most.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yep.
Thank you. So one last thing, I want to make sure that I give credit to Ms. Travers, Travers? I'm not sure I'm going to even say it right.
Travers?
Travers.
Michelle Travers?
Yeah, and Mr. Hale for the talent show. I couldn't remember her name. All right. And then we also are, this letter, are we going to post this online? That was one thing we wanted to make sure. It might be nice to be able to.
Okay, so the letter about the finalists, I will send to you or.
Do you want to just pass that along? Here, we're going to give you a copy and you could, because this is a signed copy.
Yeah, maybe just give it, maybe she could scan it in.
Great.
Okay, I will send it to you.
All right. So I think then that, thank you very much, Mary Jane. We're going to now move into our next agenda item, which is a new superintendent search and talking about the finalists and the next steps. So I'm going to hand this over to Lydia and Mary.
Okay. So we are now allowed to talk about the candidates. Everything was confidential up until today, and now we're allowed to discuss it. Starting next Tuesday, we will have our first candidate come visit. I have a tentative itinerary written up. I have to verify a couple of things. It will get posted tomorrow. And I am going to send notifications to all of the schools requesting at least some teachers to come to the meet and greets from each school. I mean, everyone's available. I mean, everyone's invited. There will be a time.
We want to have like a lot of engagement.
Yes, we want to have as much engagement as possible, but we also understand that people have other obligations and activities after school. And we, I tried to figure out a way to have a meet and greet during the day where the teachers could participate. And it's just not possible to cover classes and paras and whatnot. And so it, it has to be after school, but it's going to be right after school. And so our next steps are having the four candidates come tour the district. We will be having public interviews. So the 10th, the 16th, the 17th and the 18th. At 7:00 PM here in Fowler, we will be conducting our open meeting interviews of the candidates. And then following that, we will proceed with deliberations and which districts we want to go visit and the candidates that we want to pursue. So.
So, and I can just share with you, so on the 10th, it's going to be Brian Haas. On the 16th, it's going to be Michael Rashad. On the 17th, it's going to be John Bucky. And then on the 18th, it's going to be James Adams. So.
On 12th, John Bucky?
On the.
17th.
10th. 12th, December 12th or no?
Nope. The 10th, the 16th, the 17th and the 18th. That was the way that Carolyn had.
That's what I read down here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So.
12th, what is it? What is it again?
The, the 10th is going to be Brian Haas. The 16th is going to be Michael Rashad. On the 17th, it's going to be John Bucky. And on the 18th, it'll be James Adams.
Okay.
So for the full day.
And we'll, we'll be posting those.
We're going to be, yeah, we're posting them. We're going to, they'll be emailed. It'll be on the website. It's, and then are we also, maybe Holly Camaro?
Yeah, so I think we need to decide tonight. I think we need to vote on if we.
Yeah, do we want to do the deliberating now on the stuff that we discussed in the workshop or?
Liaison for the press and public. And then if we want to do questions, allow public questions.
So we're talking about having an interview period of up somewhere between 60 and 75 minutes for each one of these candidates. They'll, they'll all start at 7 o'clock at night. So, so the question was whether, and Carolyn from NESDEC, you know, gave us different options. And one of them was that if we wanted to have questions, not comments, but questions from the audience after we've done our interview, and whether we wanted them to be spontaneous coming up or pre-written.
Pre-submitted.
Have them pre, yeah, pre-submitted, so.
I mean, I like the idea of having public questions. I don't know the most appropriate format that will work. If it will be spontaneous or do we put like a, please submit to somebody your question that you would like the school committee to ask, or how, how do you?
I'm thinking that pre-submitted would be a good thing, because you might get a number of people that sort of are in the same category, that you can kind of put them, put the notes together, sort of like.
So I also, I kind of felt like it was, it was like we would sit back and listen while the public was reading their question and answering. We would just be kind of digesting that.
Yeah. And the other thing I think is, we know the questions we're asking. So having them pre-submitted, we can try to fill in, too. And then the only other thing that I was in consideration is she's even asking us to be very careful, given this is a very public setting for folks, to be respect, to make sure that we're maintaining respectful. So I think pre-submitting questions also supports that and ensuring that everyone that is putting their name out there and, and willing to take this very public. When else do you have such a public interview?
Right. No gotcha questions or surprises or.
Yeah, yeah, I think that that's fair, but that doesn't mean that we don't choose hard questions.
Right.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
You can have the same questions, because if you have different questions for different candidates, you're going to get different perspective. It's kind of important to have the same questions.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's what we were talking about, having, having, we would have questions. But the public, but the public also might not be coming to each of the interviews. And so I think that was the, the thought, is that some people might be more interested in one particular candidate to ask a certain question about which they may already know from another candidate or.
But everybody may not know what to answer.
Everybody may not. But I just, again, I don't, I don't know the, the right way to do it. I just thought it was, when she brought it up, an interesting idea that I thought we should explore, but.
I'd recommend generic for all of them to be pre-submitted and for us to filter through and just make sure, again, not to, not to not have.
So you're saying submitted, so we would read the questions?
So that we would read the questions, yeah, from the audience. Or we could give them the okay to read it after. I think, yeah.
So would we have them submit questions that we would then read at each of the four interviews?
It would be the same, yeah.
So that's going to be.
I don't, I don't think that's how I understood it. I thought it was that we, we would not be, that we would be listening to how they were engaging with the community.
Yeah, I do think that Carolyn, the way she suggested it, is that you could have let community member Olaf know that he got to answer, he gets to ask the questions. Sorry, I was talking about frozen.
So maybe, maybe we would say, if you want to ask a question, if you're interested, do you send an email like from the school committee saying, please let us know which interview?
See, that's the thing, is if we have our first interview Tuesday, we have to send this email tomorrow. And get the questions back, review them, make a decision on it.
I don't think we would be reviewing them, though. Like, that's where the part is, that they're asking the question directly, right?
We review them still.
No, that's why they're pre-submitted, is so we can make sure they're appropriate and it's.
But we do, we do review them. It's just then, so Carolyn said you could then call Olaf and say, hey, your question got chosen. Can you ask that at the?
Yeah.
Do you want to come and read it, or should we have someone else read it?
Aren't we having community events as part of this? So the concept is that you want to see how they interact with the community? Maybe that would be a place rather than the question and answer component? Just because having participated within our school committee meetings and people getting up and asking questions and saying things, you don't want to put yourselves or the district in a, in a situation where something is now public, where someone asks a question or says something, that the other person can then come back and say, you jeopardized and damaged my career.
Right. I would like to give people a little bit more benefit that that's really what would happen, though. I mean, I appreciate that.
It almost happened during the interim process where we, there were, it was right on the line, so.
I don't know. I mean, I just want to follow to what Carolyn had suggested. I mean, I know she's done a lot of these as well, and she thought it'd be a helpful opportunity to explore and thought it was very helpful in other districts. So, you know, I could be the minority in that opinion.
So I think that it's something that we can take a vote on right now, if we want to, about pre-submitting and selecting a few questions to, for community members for each of the interviews.
So they'd be different for each?
I think they could be different. I mean, it sounds like that's what they'd have to be. I don't think you can pick the same and ask someone to be at this every interview, per se. It could be the same.
That's how I understood it as well. Like, it could be, people might show up to one and not want to go to the other.
So, but we would need to be very clear, I think, in the communication that we need that.
I can draft the email tomorrow and send it to you to review before I, and.
That'd be great.
So I'll make a motion that we allow pre-submitted questions for that 15-minute period for each one of the candidates that residents can, can submit to you, to Lydia, for each one of the candidates. Is that clear enough? I'm not sure.
I think it is. All right, I'll second. Any discussion?
And there's some that might, like, maybe we don't get any questions, right?
Right, exactly.
So I mean, it's just going to be a moot point where it just allows the opportunity, right? So if there's no questions submitted, then it is what it is. All right.
But then how does that look if we get questions submitted for one candidate and not for another?
It's just the turnout of the public. It's just the way it is. I mean, you can't, you can't force people to show up at a interview to engage.
And being as busy a time of the year, we may not get any questions from anybody.
And also, I mean, that could happen when you go to place to place. Sometimes you get, might get more teachers engaging in some of the places than you do in other.
We could also during the interview be very clear that this is not an indication one way or the other. If there's, that it's just, it was an opportunity.
Right.
I think, because obviously.
Okay. And then what if, because we were going to do 10 questions, and what if the answering of those 10 questions takes longer than expected? Are we then going to use that 15 minutes to finish out our questions and not do the citizens' questions?
I don't know if we have to decide that, no. I mean, it depends. Maybe, we probably would know ahead of time if we get the questions submitted to us, how many, how much interest we would have. And then we could maybe.
I mean, based on the, and just from reference, when we were doing the initial interviews, 60 minutes was more than enough for them to answer 10 questions. So that's why we just had, had said 60 to 75 minutes.
I'm just playing devil's advocate. I want us to make sure that we think through everything.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's, it might be worth just asking Carolyn about, to just see what she suggests. But we know as a general.
The intent will be there.
The intent would be to be able to do that, and then we, you can see what Carolyn says for.
And I think that's part of like keeping on track.
Mm-hmm, keeping on track. And also, yeah, so.
Take a vote?
Yeah, take a vote. All in favor? All opposed? You didn't say anything in discussion, so I just, that's fine. You don't even need to say anything now. Very good. All right.
I just, I, I just see it as problematic. And if we had more time to think it through and work it through, it would be fine. But where we're like, oh, my God, we have to have this ready for Tuesday, I just feel like we could be setting ourselves up for problems. That's all.
There are some fair considerations around us. I appreciate that. So other things was, who would be the media liaison? So if you feel like I should just receive questions and then about any candidates from the media, I'm happy to do that.
You're sure?
Yeah. I might be consulting with you, but I'll take the questions.
That sounds fine.
You sure you're, you're good with it?
You sure? I mean, I can help. I mean, I'm okay, but I just wanted to, I don't want to.
We should have one person, so.
Yeah, I think it should be one person as well. And I know typically people go to the chair for the, the press PR stuff. I know that one time that I did, people questioned and it was, you know, so that's why I want to make sure that it goes to you.
And I can help you with any answers.
Yeah, obviously, given that you all just went through the screening committee process and are, have been intimately involved with NESDEC, it might, there might be things that need to.
And it may be a case of you calling NESDEC also. I mean, we're paying them.
Right.
So I'm all about calling Carolyn and asking her.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate the pep talk. I'm more than happy to take on that role. Okay. And anything else that we need to discuss?
Those were the, those were the two pieces.
We also needed to make sure we knew who was doing the topics.
Oh, yes. And who was going to be available for the four days.
And who was going to be available to escort.
I'm going to have to look at my schedule.
So the only one that I cannot do is the day of the mock interviews, which I think is the 17th.
I don't think we have to decide that tonight, though, right? Because of scheduling. I think she said that we can do that.
Mm-hmm. We could do that separately because it's just scheduling. Because we all, we've agreed on the general process and the date. Yeah.
So just know, Lydia, that if.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm doing all four days and then whoever my second is.
Yep. And I'm happy to do three out of the four. If somebody just wants to fill in the fourth one even. Or if somebody, you know, wants to do another one, so.
And which day can't you do, Mary?
17th.
Okay.
It's the mock interviews at the high school.
And I'll, I'll get back if you, or just everyone, actually, well, if we can, what, and I also know, I know tomorrow might also, I don't want to, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Okay, so then the topics, right? Are we choosing those?
Yeah, and then we'll have to look, too. So we already have, so we have some themes for interview questions. We are each going to come up with two questions and.
Do we just, do we do that already for the?
We only did it partially.
No, you chose yours and Mary chose hers, but Beth Lynn and I haven't chosen. And Maro unfortunately isn't here to choose, so she'll have to do that tomorrow.
Do you want to follow up with her tomorrow?
I'll follow up with her.
Yeah. So I know you said that you would take whatever was left over, Lydia, but I feel like, given all the work that you've put in, I would like to see what you would like to take.
I would like to do conflict dispute resolution.
It's a good one.
Honestly, I could really do any of the others. But someone's going to do an opening question. But someone's gonna do an opening question. Are you gonna do the opening?
Yeah, the chair starts with an ice-breaking opening question, something along the lines of, for the first three minutes, now that you've spent the day here, what surprised you? What have you learned?
Okay, so do you know what your second is?
I guess my second, I, the other one that's either planning or problem solving, both of those kind of occurred to me as good areas to find out more about.
Problem solving is.
Yeah, okay, problem solving, I'm taking problem solving.
Doing problem solving?
So that'll be that one, and then I'll do the icebreaker question.
All right, and then I'll do...
It's tough. You could wait and see what Mara...
Want to go to technology, Lydia? Is that your...
I do not. That is the one, that's the only one on there that I don't want to do at all, actually.
Just have Mara.
Yeah, you could have Mara choose and then decide.
I'll do, I'll do stone and chisel and hammer. That's, that's the one I'll do.
Or do you want, I mean, honestly, I'm totally flexible. Accountability, communication, feel free if you prefer one of those.
Oh, no, no, I have no interest in those.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm having a hard time deciding between personnel evaluation and...
I think we need to decide now, though, because of public meeting.
Accomplishments challenges, yeah, because we're making decisions.
Mara can't make, can't decide.
Right, she won't be deciding, she'll be just, I guess, kind of like, this is what's...
Well, we could decide to let her decide between what's left over.
Like, yeah, just say these are the ones that... Budget, you've been doing budget.
All right, I'll do budget.
I mean, I don't want to pressure you, but I feel like you're...
Okay, very good. So we have for Natasha, accountability, communication slash gaining support for schools. These are provided to us by Nezdek, by the way, so we're gonna kind of work with it, and then get very nitty-gritty with them about, so, how did you do this in the last, is what did you, so it's very specific. Lydia is budget and conflict dispute resolution. Mary is curriculum development, implementation assessment, and decision-making, those two. And then I'm doing an icebreaker question and problem solving. And then Mara, we will allow her to choose from the remaining themes, her two.
I have, okay, so I have a question now. I'm just thinking, because I know Carolyn mentioned, and I know this came up in the screening, like, there was other options, themes that were not, but you could maybe do instead. I don't see team building here. And I find that, or I feel that that is some...
Could that be part of conflict dispute resolution?
I don't...
No, probably not.
That's what I'm trying to see, can it, can it be incorporated, another one? I don't see an easy, but I...
Oh, yeah, you can incorporate anything you want into your question.
I don't know if that was a separate theme, maybe for, for Mara even to think about, you know?
Well, and you had made the point about special ed, there's nothing in there but special, which I'm thinking that she might want to...
Yeah, so maybe, okay.
So you, so we can convey...
Right.
Like, team building.
So, yeah, so Lydia will convey that to Mara as she considers. And then we each develop the two questions.
All right, and then send them to me, and then I'll create the, so what we did was we, we had the questions and then a space in between so that we could be making notes as each one of the candidates is answering the questions, just...
And you were gonna have a template that you were gonna send to the, right? Can that go into our superintendent's search folder?
Yep, if I can find it.
Okay, if you can find it.
I believe in you. Okay. Anything else in relation to that?
Mary, when the questions to you, by when, did we say?
By Sunday?
Sunday?
Yep, Sunday would be great.
And then you'll send them to me, and I'll do it in the format thinger that I did before.
Okay, so Sunday. Got it.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Um, media liaison, we've decided Bethlin.
It's gonna be Bethlin, yeah.
We skipped over citizens' comments, I just want to, I just noticed that.
Did we?
No, no.
Oh, no, no, never mind, it's next, sorry, I'm Nezdek, I'm a different Nezdek, sorry.
Yeah, because of the way that things, because there are reasons why we kind of wanted to front-load with this few things in case people wanted to be here for particular things, and then move into citizens' comments for this particular one. So, here we are. So, anything else in that? All right, good work. So then we'll see that, we'll get out the posting for the first interview.
Tomorrow, yeah. Colleen and I are already on it. I just had to get one more detail and that will...
If there's anything else you need from us, or from me, from anyone, let us know. And again, please just make sure to text me if you do need anything in particular. Let it go. There's gotta be a better...
I lost my chair.
Yeah.
Oh, is that your?
There's gotta be a good song that goes with that chair.
Somehow your chair found its way.
Okay, so, now we're gonna move into citizens' comments. So this is time when anyone may come to the microphone, just introduce yourself and say anything that you'd like to share. We do ask that people try to keep their comments to three minutes as they can, just for the sake of respecting people's time. We will make sure that we note down and hear your concern or comment.
Okay.
Okay. There is a second...
You're like a happy audience.
Yeah, we should get more of those chairs. Brian, are you coming up to say something? Okay.
I just have a question regarding lunches. How do they determine how many lunches are purchased in Fowler? Like, for the students? How many are made or whatever?
I would have to ask what they use, but they use, like, basically data from, you know, previous lunches. They could use last year's data as well as, like, what they...
Yeah, because I'm still...
But they adjust, they adjust it regularly.
All right, yeah, because my son, he's, he's a vegetarian.
Yep.
So he's the fourth, he's in fifth grade, so he has the last lunch, and there's never anything but meat left, like sandwiches, he doesn't eat. Or, so he's buying junk food, basically, ice cream to eat. So that's, and it's not just him getting it, there's other people that are saying...
So I would say that each, each meal does have a vegetable, and I, and that's not, in the sandwiches wraps, he could have that, but I totally get it. So maybe we can just talk to our food service director about some additional vegetarian...
Or is there a way to reserve?
Put some aside in his lunch or something.
Just vegetarian.
Or we could, I know that there's something that we can do about that, we've done it for...
Yeah, no, I mean, he said, when he, because he asked what happened, and they say that the young, the other classes buy multiple lunches. So there's not lunches left over for the fifth graders.
I know that's possible.
So we can definitely have that discussion very much so. You actually can email Heather, she's really responsive to parents. So if you feel comfortable emailing her yourself, feel, go right ahead and do that. But I will also bring it up with her as well. She's a licensed dietitian as well, so she's a wealth of information and really open to talking to the public, very good about working with people, so...
She's been very responsive, I know she's very responsive when I...
And I might have missed it, did you guys say you were thinking about moving the meeting from here to another place, or just cutting it to 10 o'clock?
So it looked like, yeah, so the consideration was meeting time is long, it's difficult for students, high school students, right? So that was kind of the starting point.
I just want to let you know, if you were thinking about moving it...
Right, so the one possible, one possible consideration was moving, and they had looked at that for us last year, so that's what we were talking about. It looked like the only real option may be potentially town hall as far as have, as like a feasible potential.
No, I just want to let you know, if you decided to move it from here, you have to go to the bylaw committee, and then the town has to vote on moving out of the bylaws.
Great, thank you, that's good to know. I would not have known that, Brian. If you have, if you had any feedback, we're, we're open to the feedback too about moving it, so...
It might be in the bylaw that it has to be where the central...
We'll, we'll definitely look into it to make sure.
We don't have to, because we're not going anywhere.
Yeah, right.
Don't waste your energy. Plenty and unpleased.
All right, very good. Well, thank you. So we are now going to move into, our next item is the next Nezdek enrollment numbers, and am I gonna give that to you, Mary?
Yeah, I just want everybody to take a look at the Nezdek numbers. As you know, that we have budget coming up, so we've been looking at enrollment numbers historically for the next, you know, 20 years in some parts. So you can see that the enrollment projections for Maynard are going down, and they have gone down on all the sheets. So if you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, I just wanted you to see that. Not that it has anything to do with the budget, but these may be some considerations we have to look at in developing the budget in the future.
We have been discussing these at the TRICOM budget meetings.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Mary and I have made the rest of the town aware.
There are copies up there for, for people who are interested, but I just wanted to make sure that we are looking at all the data when we make our decisions, and this is part of the data, when we talked about it. Some of the considerations were perhaps, you know, if you look in the yellow on page three, Nezdek projections assume that there might be some new families moving into the construction on Summer Street. So there, you know, they did put that in as a consideration, there are only two bedrooms, so having families...
One or two kids most.
Pardon?
It'd be like one or two kids.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see a big growth with that, I mean, families aren't gonna move into two bedrooms. So, so that becomes an issue. So, you know, there might be other ways for us to try, to now really take a good look at, what are we gonna do to attract students here?
So I know that that was one of the conversations that we were having in our budget subcommittee about possibly reducing some classes. And then also the, the survey that's gone out about, for the preschool, to enlarge the preschool to, because ours hasn't been totally as easily accessible for a lot of parents because it's not full day. So parents that would otherwise bring their kids...
It's not full week either.
Yeah, it's also not a full week, right, so, and it also isn't self-sustaining. We are subsidizing it, so I know that's a concern that was brought up from the survey, from one of the responses. So this is our effort to do multiple things, to have it be self-sustaining, which it was when we first started it, but, and also to, to make it more available to parents, and quite honestly, to get the kids early on...
Into the schools.
Into the schools, into our schools versus possibly going somewhere else, so...
I have a question about that, the self-sustaining piece, and Michelle. So I know that we're required anyway for early, for kids who are like over three to provide early intervention anyway for, and so, aside from paying students, wouldn't we incur in cost anyway because we have to provide those services? So not being self-sustaining really shouldn't be the only driver, because either way, we have to provide services...
It's not the only, I don't think it's the only, but there's an option for it to be self-sustaining. And that's, that's the goal when, I think, any school district looks on a preschool program. The goal is actually to be able to provide those services and offer out the, the remaining seats in order to make it self-sustaining, so...
To offset the costs that we're incurring of what we're already...
So that's an opportunity for this district to offset that cost. And so the goal isn't, like, just because it's not self-sustaining, it's more so of being able to generate enough revenues from this program to help the district, just like we, you know, when we talk about foreign exchange students, when we talk about school choice.
So ideally, we would like it to be net neutral at the, at the, at least, at a minimum.
Well, another piece is we've got a phenomenal preschool program. I mean, what's the certification, the NE, I never get the, the acronym. Thank you, yes.
NYAC for the elementary, yeah.
Yeah, staff worked really, really hard to get that, and, and so, it's a great program. So it's another one that we need to be celebrating.
I think, I want to make sure that we're thoughtful about engaging also the, the pre-K team in that, because I, I've received feedback that some people were surprised that the survey went out on social media and shared, that was maybe surprising to some staff.
Well, we, we had previous, if that hasn't trickled down to who it needed to be.
I don't, yeah, I don't think it did.
Our preliminary conversations are with, you know, principals of the building and the leads of the preschool program, so...
The entire preschool team discussed it at their Friday meeting.
Right.
So, there's multiple conversations that occurred prior to sending this survey.
And we actually started having this conversation last year. So this is, two years ago, so, so this is, yeah.
And I had emailed you, Jenna, for some of the feedback that I already got, so, questions which are clearly not...
No, you answer, I thought you, that's why, you answer them fine. We are currently running, the preschool is running, or costing an operating budget $218,000. So we can choose to continue to spend $218,000 to subsidize the preschool program. It just means that we won't then have that $218,000 to do other things that people are asking for. And if we have the ability to increase revenue to do that, $218,000 added to our budget would be a significant amount of money to be able to do something.
We need to do something great, it's, yeah.
It brings students in, it would increase our enrollment, it could potentially increase social choice enrollment because people will be coming in from surrounding communities. Additionally, I think if we expand it to five days, it's a more equitable program because currently the people who can access it are those who have either flexible work schedules or they don't work, whereas some working families who need a lower-cost preschool option, which this is, can't access it because they need that extended time for at least five days a week. We're also working with Lois Cohen to discuss could we offer before and after-school care for our preschool students, to again, make it more available and accessible to parents. And so I think there's a lot of reasons to consider and to, and to, to think about moving this forward. Preschool is probably something we should be providing to all students, universal preschool. Unfortunately, right now, the funding mechanism isn't there for that, but this is a way that we can make it more accessible.
Kindergarten, it's hard for the state to even do kindergarten universally.
Right, they're not requiring kindergarten at this point.
Kindergarten is not required?
There are things that we could do as a town to make preschool more affordable and more accessible to families.
So I know that the pre-K has a parent session or a parent night coming up, and I just, I worry that with the timing of the survey, if they're gonna, the team might get...
Yeah, I have one quick question for you.
Sure, absolutely.
I think that this is a great idea to think about, expanding the program. I've worked in the program for this, my eighth year. My children have gone through the program. One of my girls was diagnosed, and the team is an amazing team. I don't think they're celebrated and it's not enough. My only question is, since next month is preschool information night, and that's when we begin accepting registrations, does this mean all of these questions and everything has to be determined prior to that meeting? Because if you're going to offer it and say, yes, it's definitely Monday through Friday, and you're accepting checks that night, will these decisions be made prior to that night?
I mean, so the first piece of information, which is why we did, we didn't even want to delay as long as we did in getting the survey out, you know, in terms of that. The first piece is to determine whether there's a need, because in order to make this self-sustaining, yes, we want to expand it to five days, which is going to increase our operating costs. So we need to increase the amount of paying students for that. I think the number is 37.5 or 32.5 additional paying full-day slots is what we would need. We need to determine if there's that amount of interest, which is why the survey is there. Currently, we have about 25 respondents on the survey. It is overwhelmingly positive that this would be a good option. There are, how many did I say, 12, who on the survey indicated that they would absolutely be interested in attending this piece? That is not a sufficient number for us to move forward. However, does that allow us to expand our program by offering another classroom within the same context? We also have connected email addresses on that survey so that we could reach out to families and say, we may not be able to do a five-day next year, but if your child is not enrolled in Green Meadow preschool, would you be willing to do this piece? Particularly if we could get a before or after-school component, or, you know, if there was some other component that we could do. Ideally, we would like to be able to have the decision made so that during preschool registration that the things are happening. We also need to look at other factors and considerations. We would need to do impact bargaining with both the paraprofessionals union and the teachers' union around some of these pieces and changes. We would need to look at reallocating or reorganizing our grade level spans within the three buildings so that we could have appropriate access to specials for preparation periods and things of that nature. We need to work with the pre-K team specifically on, while we have a 45-minute contractual obligation for a preparation period, there's concern that that doesn't, doesn't work within a preschool student schedule.
It's not age-appropriate, right.
So we would need to figure out how we do that.
Yeah, so do we have to make all these decisions prior to having parents? I mean, because they're gonna come in, they want, they're gonna be handing over a check, they want all of the information that night, and we want to be able to give them the correct information. Like, don't sign your child up if we think it's gonna be Monday through Friday, and then it's gonna be Monday through Thursday.
So we would be, if, if, if we are able to make a decision, if in the next 24 hours I get on this survey 75 respondents who say, absolutely, we want preschool, then I think, you know, okay, we move forward. If we don't, which I'm not expecting, the preschool information night will likely go forward with the current program offerings as it is. If within that time, we are then able to say, within all of the other things we have to work out between that, the preschool registration and the summer, to say, yes, we can do this for next year, then we would contact those families and say, are you interested in the five-day option?
Okay.
Jennifer, would it be helpful maybe between now and the parent night that you would be able to meet with the full pre-K team to talk? Because I'm guessing, they're not all represented here, but I know a lot of them probably have similar questions.
So we already have a meeting scheduled on what we wanted to do with the reassurance.
Just to bring the reassurances on, on-
Well, it wasn't reassurances, it was we want to get the data and talk with them about what this would look like and what it would be moving forward. You know, we, again, we've been communicating with folks around what this would look like in, in terms of that. But to have a meeting to talk about nothing didn't seem really fruitful.
I don't think that they think it's nothing necessarily.
I mean, at any point, like, feel free to come and see the program because we love the program, we think it's fabulous, but we could, there's so many questions, like specials and like the, you know, when will teachers then be evaluating students because they evaluate on Fridays, there's a whole list of questions. So at any point, I mean, come to the program and see what we do on a daily basis, and will we need to add staff? Because we're, you know, we welcome, like, the parents don't work on Fridays, so we, we hear the information from the teachers, and that's great. But we want to be involved in the discussions as well because we love the program, our kids have gone through the program, and we've worked in the program for a very long time, and we want to see it thrive.
Yeah.
We're very proud of the program, but come see us, come into our classrooms at any time. We'd love to show you what we do on a daily basis. I know Mary Jane comes in all the time, we're singing and dancing, right?
Get my fix, get my baby fixes.
We certainly have been out there, we can continue to do that. I guess the piece being, we don't have any information to talk about what this would look like. If we got the survey back that said no one was interested, we'd be having a lot of meetings and conversations about something that wasn't going anywhere.
Okay, so basically, if, if you don't get a lot of responses, we're going to, the January meeting, it will be, we keep it the way it is.
I have never anticipated a January meeting being anything different than-
Okay, the current program, great.
Right.
So they don't have to answer other questions. Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so I, I do want to say that we're getting off time, and we're also kind of shifting to different topics. So if there's something, I'm just saying that, but-
I just wanted to say, can we put the article in the Action Unlimited, have Beacon Village out? Because you had said it yourself, Michelle, what other districts do is they market that this is. So just to even say, I can write something up, although it's not for this week, it'd be for next week, to put in the Action Unlimited because we're also looking for responses from other communities, you know, would your kids come here? So if you give me something, then I'm happy to put it in the action, because I swear by the action, and I'm sure that Holly would do it in the Beacon too, just to try and get, you know, get that exposure. That's all I wanted to say.
That's very succinct, thank you. And I appreciate the conversation here too, because this is part of what the enrollment numbers were, was meant to be able to start that, have that discussion, so thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
And thank you for fielding some of those too, Jennifer. So, the other thing that I do want to just point out in relation to enrollment is that, from what I understand, we are not, this is happening around.
Oh, yeah, we're not anymore.
Yeah, we're not alone, and, and, but it is an important discussion, and it has budget implications that have already, we've already realized as far as, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, our enrollment determines, basically, if you think about it, your enrollment determines how much money you get from the state in your Chapter 70 funding in order to, you know, cover or supplement our budget, right, from the town. What happened to us in the previous years that our enrollment had dropped so significantly that we missed foundation aid? And that was a hit to us. Thankfully, Mike Guzzo is so good at his job at the town, he actually budgeted less than what we had normally been getting in foundation aid to be conservative, so it wasn't as big of a hit as it was really on what we weren't getting. Because I think we were averaging 200 to almost $400,000 a year in foundation aid. Don't quote me on those exact numbers, but I believe he, he budgeted $180,000 or something to that amount.
Yeah, like 25,000 or something.
We ended up getting $40,000, which was the minimum amount. It's called the hold harmless amount. And basically what that is, is you get whatever the state's increment per pupil is a year, and I believe it was $20. So, there's, what hold harmless means is the state can never give us less than what they had given us in a previous year. But what they don't do is they don't give us any more than their, the tiny increment. What foundation aid does is when you hit a certain point, the state comes in and they say, okay, here's your Chapter 70, you got your $20 per person, but we're also giving you some foundation aid because of your population. But because our population dropped, and it also has to do with the demographics of the town, so with your, it's the town's ability to pay comes into, there's a million things that go into the Chapter 70 formula, but is one of the areas is your town's ability to pay. So, you know, the, I don't want to say the richer a town gets, but-
We were deemed pay more-
We were deemed more payable for the amount of students that we had enrolled in our, in our district. They felt, you know, and, and there's, there's a huge calculation that comes into it, so it's a numbers thing. We missed it by 3%, and I, like I've said before, I called the state, we went through all our numbers. Like, the guy thought I was crazy, but I, you know, it was, we were so close, teetering on the edge, it was sad. But really, you know, the numbers were correct, and, and that's just what it falls, and it's, it's a formula, and you, you know. It was the first time, I think, we had missed foundation aid since 2014. So, you know, it, it wasn't something, we were so close, it wasn't something that we were 100% expecting, so.
Right, and looking at the numbers, it doesn't look like it's-
But with these, with these numbers, that, that's, you know, we may be in a situation in the next couple of years that we're not going to get that, and we're going to hit the $20 per student, which equals $40,000 increase in Chapter 70 funding. So, that's not a ton, and it's not really anything. So with these numbers, that, that is what it may look like moving forward. Now, these aren't our, we don't go by this 100%, but this is our best gauged, and this is actually what a lot of districts use to, to gauge their enrollment numbers off of.
And we're going to be having many more of these discussions to, because we do, every year, the budget gets tighter and tighter and tighter. So we have to keep really re-looking at what's the best interest of the kids, and it's going to mean more of these discussions.
Yep.
So I commend you guys for really looking into this one.
All right. Anything else on enrollment? Thank you for bringing to our attention and starting that discussion now so we can continue.
Okay, so I'm up again for the Green Meadow Principal Search. As you know, that we have two principal positions opened at Green Meadow. So I created a timeline for the two particular principals. First one is Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, which is going from January to March. And I believe, I'm not sure if this is recommended, but I believe last year they had a principal search committee in place. Not sure if we'd like to create a new one for each of these committees.
I don't think it would, they, I think they are, they were expecting, just so.
Yeah, my understanding from people I spoke with, they just thought that they were just waiting to be told.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's why I put it on this one. I, that was my understanding as well, but I didn't know if, you know-
Maybe do like an outreach to them again, hey, and see if-
Are you still interested type thing?
To try it and availability also, like change from-
And so I created one from January to March for that one, and then I thought perhaps the 10-month Leadership Operations would go from March to the beginning of May.
So the idea is to have the first one-
The 12-month position first.
Okay.
Yes.
Because our concern-
That decision by, I can't seem to find, I, sorry.
Oh, here, Mary, it should be in your packet.
Yeah, oh, okay, oh, I didn't see that. And then, so to have the final decision by May for them to start in-
March, the first one will be done by March.
So other side.
That's all right, no worries.
Because our, our concern is if we go with the 10-month position here, and then they're hired in March, if there, if there's a 12-month position that person wants, they could conceivably leave, and that will have nobody. So May's a better timeframe for the 10-month position.
Perfect, sounds like a good plan, yeah.
So, so if you want to take a look at it and you make suggestions, this is a draft at this point, I'm not putting it out to the public until we, you know, vetted some time into it, but this is the draft, so take a look at it. If you have any questions or comments or concerns, anything that you want to change, let me know. And if not, if that's the case, then I will bring it to the next meeting to show you the exact dates.
Oh, I do have it.
And in the meantime, you'll check, check with the, the first screening committee just to see if everybody's on track.
That'll happen in the meantime.
And I think Charles chaired, chaired that.
I talked to Charles today about that, and that's why we had that information, but I want to verify that the people are still interested. And I'm not even sure all the staff are here, I don't know if it was on the list, so.
Yeah.
So that could be something.
It was made up of a good, a good, you know, cut.
I thought there was a lot of people on it, but there's some people I would have preferred to put on, and I would like to really put the assistant on there. I think that's an important person to put on, the office assistant, and they're not on the searches, and I really think that's an important person to add. So, because ultimately, they're going to be working with the person, so I like to put them on as well. So I may add somebody to that particular one, and, but I will call out for a general search for the Leadership and Operations one. We'll do a different search committee, because I'm not sure they're going to do it twice, the same people, two different searches.
What if you have certain candidates, though, that might?
Well, we're going to market them two different ways.
Different ways, so they'd have to apply for it separately anyway.
Yeah, we're not going to just offer two principals because your, our questions will be, right, is that what we said, yeah? So the questions will be different, and their resumes will look differently. I mean, we may see one at that time, and, I don't know, maybe they'll reapply when they see their position.
Are we talking about posting this as a principal of-
Leadership and Operations.
Leadership and Operations?
Yep.
So we're, we're adhering to the two-principal model, is what we're saying. We're not going to think of the 10, maybe the 10-month as a assistant principal?
Not, that was not my understanding at this time.
Are these, the Leadership and Operations is full-time?
It's 10-month.
Is full-time 10-month?
Yep, yep.
And then the CIA?
Is a 12-month position.
Is 12-month.
So the CIA is the one that we're doing first?
Yes.
Okay, I misunderstood, okay.
But was one going to be halftime still, or?
Nope, that was only at high school.
Just for this year.
Full-time for next year. The only reason it went to halftime this year was because-
The music thing, right?
Nope, it was the, right, the $80,000 special, yeah.
So, Mary Jane, I know there was possible concern about some having the two-principal due process for parents that were, that was a concern that you-
I had, but I, I believe this model was already voted for, so I, you know, I don't-
Well, I'd like to, I mean, that's important to weigh, I think your feedback on what those concerns were, so I, before we-
I don't have, I don't know the data why we went with the two-person model, to be honest with you, so we can do a little bit of research on that, and I can let you know. My concern was, especially for suspensions and stuff, following due process, there's no appeal process when it comes to something like this.
And then also about assess, or assessments of?
Evaluations.
Evaluations.
But that's not a bigger issue, because we just have, teachers have to agree on who their second evaluator are, is.
Okay.
Which would be the case whether it was a principal.
Correct, that would make a difference, one way or the other.
Right, so if there's someone who's designated solely as this, as the assessment, curriculum assessment, how does that-
They typically do the evaluations, and then we would ask the other, the teachers have to agree on their second evaluator.
Right, so that's what I would wonder, like, if they, they don't agree to that evaluator, and that eval, that principal is, part of their function is doing assessments, how does that work out?
They have to, you, they can't not agree, yeah.
They don't have a choice on the primary.
Within the contract, the primary evaluator is determined by the district, so within this model, we have identified that classroom teachers, people who work directly with students within classroom spaces would have the principal of curriculum instruction and assessment as their primary evaluator. People who work more in the social-emotional realm with students would have the principal of leadership and operations as their primary evaluator. And then the other person is suggested as the secondary evaluator, which is the same process that we needed to use when it was the principal and assistant principal.
Exactly.
So that part won't be connected?
That does not change, no.
It's just more about the due process?
That was my bigger concern. It hasn't been a concern here, but I do, I do worry about that.
So we have identified specifically within the roles of each of these principals who would be overseeing the investigations of any of those components or the investigations of suspensions, and then who would be the final authority, so that we, based on our attorney's direction, have divided those pieces up. So the same person is not investigating-
Right.
Who is making the final decision. So currently, I believe that the investigator for bullying disciplinary issues and fractions is the leadership and operations, and the final decision-maker is the principal of curriculum instruction and assessment.
But typically, you have an assistant, the assistant principal makes the decision, and if they don't like that, then they go to the principal.
Right.
And now the process would go from the principal to the superintendent. There's no in-between with that.
It skips, it's like skipping a step, sort of, an opportunity for us.
Right.
How, I would be curious as far as how legal way in on that?
But I think if they, but, I'm sure that they've already talked about that, so that's why I'm not-
Legal way in on skipping that?
They didn't suggest there was a chance.
Can we get legal to weigh in on that aspect, because that sounds like a crucial possible parental aspect?
So, I'm sorry, I maybe wasn't clear. They didn't say that that was a challenge, they said that that was not-
Oh, I think they were.
When you talk to them about these issues, that was not something that they expressed concern over.
Did we specifically ask about that?
I can specifically ask that question.
That was just a concern that I had, but again, Jennifer's already clarified.
Well, I'm here the superintendent, so I want to value what your feedback would be, and, and good, so.
Okay, so-
No, I appreciate that, thank you.
Anything else in relation to this?
No, if you could just take a look at it and give me some comments, I would appreciate that. But I, Charles and I, I think we, you know, I don't know, how's the deadline, the timelines look for everybody, and again, we'll be calling out.
So would you like, would you like us if we had feedback to give it directly to you?
Yeah, just give it to me then.
By when?
Yeah, I would give it to by next Friday so that I can have it in place. Yep.
Okay. Thank you for putting this together, we really appreciate that.
Yes, very helpful, so feedback by next Friday.
Last stuff is online, you don't have to make stuff up.
What are you talking about? I missed that, deaf ear.
So that 13th?
All right. So by Friday, the 13th.
Friday's the 13th?
Friday the 13th.
Friday's not the 13th?
It is next Friday.
Oh, next Friday.
Next Friday.
Right, next Friday's a 10, there's a Tuesday, yeah, yeah.
So that's when you, next Friday, December 13th, to you.
So, next on the agenda was the Green Meadow update, and I think that some of this got discussed in your superintendent's report, so I don't know.
I wasn't sure if Natasha wanted to report on that, because I know you guys want to have an agenda all the time now, so.
Yeah.
I don't have anything to report on that.
The only thing I have, I know that Mauro and I have been going back and forth with Chris and, because we had shared some of the concerns of the, about the MOU also built into that and getting visibility into that, and I can share what he-
Who's Chris?
Krista Silva, sorry, Waters Lopman.
Yep.
This is about not Green Meadow, though.
It was about, both, we wanted to invite, the intent was, and I think you had mentioned this last minute, that they would, at one point, come speak to us. And one of the things is two issues, one, they're a bug. One was getting an update about the timeline of, you know, and you mentioned, you kind of, you mentioned this about the survey and coming out and looking at it, and how that might impact any decision-making the school committee would need to do, or if, you know, depending on whatever the results are, or for planning for the summer. So that was something that was raised, as far as if we need to get money and how-
Yeah, we don't have anything yet on that.
How, how that timeline would work. And I know we had like a great conversation about, you know, we're not experts in that-
Yep.
Purchasing area, but expressing concern that we want to make sure we're close enough to the decision or when there's a pivot that we are made aware ASAP to be able to adjust, because it could impact opening next year or whatever that might be. The other part was the MOU and getting information and, and how we might have a better understanding, because it seems like, I don't know if Chris's understanding was that the school has been engaged.
So, like, I guess, are we talking about the facilities director? I guess I'm not sure what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think that's what you're talking about, the facilities position.
The MOE, yes, MOE about the-
Okay, that's, I thought we were talking about Green Meadow, but then you went to that, so I was getting confused.
Yeah, well, they were kind of, it was both things we were kind of doing outreach on because they were needing to have school engagement.
We, since we have spoken, we did get, we, we did get a copy of the MOU as well as a copy of the job description that they have came up with. And like I had said previously, I felt that that's what they were, they were going to give it to us, and then we were going to have the opportunity to go back and forth on some things. So we have had that opportunity right now. I actually, Jennifer and I met with Greg this morning and had a conversation about that. Mary Jane and I have emailed with them over the weekend after reading, we both had some comments after reading both the MOU as well as the job description and things that we both felt needed to be added to that. And then some questions about just the funding mechanism and what they were expecting from us and such. So we have had additional conversations since then, because we have gotten copies of that information. I think what I had said the last time was, is that they were drawing something up. We didn't actually have, we had, we told them what we had wanted in the beginning, then they were drawing something up, and then I was expecting that once they gave it to us, and that really was the case, once they gave it to us, we've had open discussion about, you know, different concerns, things we felt may have been missed, things that we felt may not, should not be in there, type of information. So we're still working through that.
Are you able to loop Mauro and I in on that, because we are part of the negotiation, and I know- Because we are part of the negotiation, and I know the MOU is part of that, and I know the attorney also, Sarah, had some concerns where she wanted to weigh in, um, just to see, seeing, just to kind of have visibility into the conversation.
And if we're going to start doing contract negotiations with, um, the custodians, it could impact that as well.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the conversations that are happening as they're unfolding, so it would just be good to?
It's really just, we're, you know, we're just trying to tap into our expertise, and we feel need to be, um, you know, like, one of the things.
I'm glad that they're engaging, so that's actually.
She was talking about AHRAs. She was worried about AHRAs. I was worried about staff evaluation, so, you know, those things weren't in there.
And what has gotten us to this point, so that, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
And this has already been way through town council, I think, already, right?
I believe it has.
Correct, but I, he's going to go back to his council once with our, with our edits, as well as we felt we would go to our council with the edits as well, so, um, we, we're just not, we haven't finalized it yet. We're just not there yet.
But the facilities director would be an employee of the district?
So, we're still a little confused about that. I believe it would be, they would, 75% here, 25% of the town, that's what Greg.
Does that mean we'll get our equipment back?
We don't, we're not there yet.
We're having those conversations. I don't want to make any promises, because we haven't finalized, you know, anything yet, um, but we are diligently working on it, and we are definitely advocating for what we feel is, um, best. I can forward you the email change on our conversation.
I think just Mauro, Mauro and I, my signature will be right.
I do think it might be, Sarah just seemed to have some considerations just in passing, some.
She happened to hear it, I think, when we talked about it, and she happened to like.
I actually talked to her after that meeting, so she's, she's aware on what the process we're doing.
Yeah, but she, when we had, um, an executive session, she also made a point of bringing it up again, how she would really want to make sure she's able to get visibility on that.
Well, it was more that she had.
Planning on doing that anyway.
100%, yep, yep.
Yeah, it was more just considerations historically that she's, is in her mind, that she's been, yeah, that's all, yeah. Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else in relation to the update, besides you'd mentioned in your superintendent's report as well? So we appreciate that.
Yep.
I think just the communication aspect is the only other part, but it sounds like, as once it finishes, that will be.
Yeah, I don't have, I'd hate to put something out that's not finished.
Right.
So we, really, we're still, Michelle and I probably should get together, maybe tomorrow or Monday, to see, to get our final take on it, and then get that back there, and then.
I think some people were surprised that, um, that that was happening, which is, and a pleasant surprise.
Oh, you're talking about CBI?
The CBI, yeah.
Oh, actually, what, yeah, I thought we're still on the MOU.
Okay, sorry. No, you went back to the Green Meadow, so I shifted, but I think some people were pleasantly surprised at the, you know, that, when I mentioned that, yes, we will have a structural engineer coming out also, but, um.
Well, when you had asked, I didn't have a date yet, so, and I, and they kept saying they were going to contact me, and I hadn't heard anything, so I thought, well, maybe they contacted Michelle, so, she said they hadn't, so, next day, lo and behold.
Yeah, so he calls me at 10:00 and says, can I be there at 12:00?
So there we are.
So, and we got them in there.
You did, good work.
The sooner the better, so, um, that's what.
So you'll be ready to provide information?
Oh, I, I don't, I'm not making promises, as Michelle said.
The report is technically due.
The report is due to Greg Johnson, like, it's not actually due to us. Like, this is, this is something that the town is.
So that's an important piece to consider.
Right, so, and if they ask for an extension, but just a general date, is, it's due to the town on December 16th.
Yeah, oh, I, I think people are just happy to know that a structural engineer is, is on his momentum side.
Certainly know that. I panicked every day, so we know, so.
To know, like, when the process is completed, and the report's due to the town.
Yeah, just a very quick synopsis, so, they've been out, ongoing, you know.
I can do that.
Yeah.
They only know it once, so I don't want to.
It was just yesterday, and I believe that they're.
Which is good, because then we'll look very responsive to, hey, um.
But then I'm going to get, when are they coming again? I don't, but I don't know!
No, I know, you can only do the best you can with getting that information out, and I appreciate you putting out what you did, um, before.
Thanks for your help.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, I know some, it's, it's apparently never enough, so, sometimes. But I, again, it is what it is, the best you can, part of it's monitoring, part of it's, you know, going forward with getting the project done, so.
I was just thankful that everybody got the snow day announcement, that's what's my concern.
And, you know, in the end, we're, we're working.
All right, great, thank you.
Thanks, Natasha.
Thank you. So, um, next, we have citizens' comments, so this is, uh, we have two times every meeting, so this is our second time, in case anyone would like to come up, just state your name and anything you'd like to say. Okay, all right, very good. Then we are going to move into members' comments. This is where we'd also include, um, subcommittee report outs, so, um, I generally just start over there.
So, we were supposed to have a TRICOM budget meeting on Monday, but obviously did not. We were also supposed to have a budget subcommittee meeting, and did not. So we are rescheduling all of budget meetings, um, and we have, the 12th is when we're going to do the TRICOM budget, and Monday at 11:00 is the in-district budget subcommittee meeting. And I think that's it.
You went to the pilot evaluation training, in addition. That was so long ago now.
It was so long ago. Okay, yes, so Mauro and I went to the, um, I don't know why it's called a drive-in, um, workshop, but for superintendent, the new superintendent evaluation format. It was very good. And, um, I think that going forward, it's going to make the process a lot easier. It certainly helped us to understand what we needed to do. We really need to get together and solidify the school, our, our goals, so that we can help Mary Jane solidify her goals, so that we actually have something to evaluate.
Yeah, so the, can we do that? I think that we should, um, through subcommittees, we were going to do some of the work for the specifics, right? So I think that in our next meeting, we should finalize that.
On the 19th?
The 19th.
Okay.
If, if that makes sense to you all.
And it also talked to.
Oh, we have a interview?
Nope.
Uh, hold on.
Nope.
Nope, 19th is our regular meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, that was an option, if we needed it, but we didn't.
I need to look at the dates. I keep typing these things wrong. I'm just looking at, I just fixed the 17th, I took the 12th off, but the 19th is the other date I have on there, so I typed wrong, sorry.
It's okay.
The 19th is the school committee meeting.
So, how do we know how we should come prepared for the 19th meeting?
So, just as a, so what we had said was that you were going to send to me the, whatever your goals from your subcommittee were, within, we had assigned goals, which are on.
I did that, you have it.
Way to be! So, um, so if you haven't, then send them to me, and then we'll all be able to have that to look at and see what we want to add, change, edit, to finalize.
Okay, are we doing that in a workshop, or are we doing that during this meeting?
We talked about it in the workshop.
We talked about a workshop. It will mean, though, because we already know we're going to have an executive session after our next meeting, uh, for reason number two, in relation to getting on union staff contractual, yeah. So it would just be a long night.
Okay. Okay.
What did we decide? I don't know what you're talking about.
We.
We're having a very long meeting on 19th.
Yeah, okay, something on the 19th.
There'll be a workshop to finalize our goals, so, it could be good for you to be there.
Yeah, that's fine, I just, I, that's what I thought, then you were talking about something else, I wasn't quite sure if I was following, or.
No, just the executive session after.
Afterwards.
After the regular meeting is, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
MGL 30A-C 4027,000.
See, I don't know that, I don't recognize that one, but okay.
We're going to cut you off.
Okay, so, um, there is a mask workshop that I know Mary registered for, I'll be registering for. I don't know if Colleen is going to get information about the registering.
The 23rd, January 29th.
29th, it's about, um, school safety, I was just looking it up again, um, school safety and security, which is going to be held at Assabit Valley for a school committee, so it would be cool for us to be able to engage. Um, it's, it's in the evening, um, so that was something that looked interesting.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that.
I saw it some, I don't know where I saw it, anyway, um, saw it somewhere and looked interesting. And I know we couldn't do the, uh, conference, so I thought this would be one of those ways we can supplement our, our knowledge. CPAC Winter Social had to be rescheduled. They were looking at the 17th, um, but, um, we wanted to, but they, they are aware that because, I did, I did put them on notice, that we will have some superintendent search happenings at the time, and that we would be deciding tonight, which is why I'm trying to get, make sure I have my dates correct. So, one more time, 16th, 17th, 18th, and?
10th.
10th, wow, that's, I typed in 9 instead of a 0, okay, 10th, and 10th is Brian Haas?
Right.
Got it, thank you. Um, so I will punt back the dates that were not available for, and so they can think about rescheduling, um, when that will be, and share it accordingly, um, as well.
It shouldn't be based around us.
Well, I think they don't want to, if their community is interested in coming to a school committee member, a meeting, that has a potential, I think it might deviate, people will feel torn, you know, participation might be down. Um, and so a lot of work goes into that, and, you know, like preschool teachers who are integrated, they, you know, participate in the social principles, so, anyway, so there's a whole way, just trying to avoid, um, shared interest. The, um, I talked about the MOU, um, and the preschool survey, and I would just want to echo that it'd be great if there could be some meeting with the pre-K team, just, even if it's just a, um, a listening session, to hear the concerns that they do have, whether they're imminent or not, uh, I think it's just a valid, uh, opportunity to, to, to take into consideration, even if it's for future years, possibly. Email, Mary Jane, I wasn't sure if there's going to be any emails to Spanish-American families about wait lists. I know this was kind of a thing that I keep hearing happening.
I did talk to Donna about that, but I, I'll have to double-check with her.
Okay, okay, all right, and I don't, and I don't know if it was happening, I know people have been, some people have expected it with the, where it was left off, but I've heard, um, I was approached by a family asking about it, and so I don't know the appropriate response.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't, I'm sure how she responded to everybody, but I asked for CC, so I don't think, I don't think it's been done, so I will.
Okay.
I will get on her for that.
That'll be, that'll be great. Um, and I just wanted to highlight, I know that we had the, the presentations from the school council, and Lucy Cockens' curriculum was one of the things that Green Meadow had, had mentioned about seeking interest in, and it just happened to have, over Thanksgiving holiday, a lot of conversation about Lucy Cockens, and a lot of debate on whether that's appropriate for literacy, and so I just want to share, I'm going to forward that over to you, because I know that there is, in the literacy dyslexia community, a lot of concern about the approaches with that, and if we're investing money, is that the right way to continue on with something versus exploring other opportunities that might be better suited to support reading science? So, just wanted to share that. Um, and that's, oh, and the other thing too, which Mary Jane and I'll share with you, but I'm going to forward to Carol and, and Charles for the collaboration subcommittee. Dussey updated, um, their N1A, um, which is their IEP evaluation consent form, which allows parents to indicate at that time that they would want, um, their report sent to them, where they don't have to proactively ask for it afterwards, um, so I just want to make sure that this is something that, and I'll include you as well on that, but that is something that the district is able to do, because I know from CPAC and families, sometimes, um, getting, they don't realize that they have to ask for it, that the reports aren't always given to them, and I think this is helpful to mitigate some of those road bumps and, and information sharing.
Sure, I would love that email, that'd be great.
Yeah, and I know it was one of the recommend, or possible recommendations, actually, at CPAC included, is getting reports to families in a timely manner, so, that's my help with that. And that's all I got.
Hi, just a couple of things. Um, the, um, we don't do enough of celebrating, as Mary said, and celebrating people that are doing extraordinary things for the, the school system, and I know we had to give up some professional development money, um, for various reasons for this year, and I just want to, um, give a shout-out to the following people, because there's going to be professional development tomorrow on cultural proficiency in the classrooms, and the people that, um, are taking leadership roles, Catherine Deorian, um, Jean Lebel, Jen Adams, Chuck Karaginos, Kevin Caruso, Dan Costello, Mike Barth, Denise Nelson, Mindy Skura, Karen Murphy, um, Dam Nujin, Jennifer Goddard again, um, Tim McGillicuddy, and Terry Morrison, so I just wanted to say thank you to them, because it's, um, it's pretty incredible that, you know, that, that we can do our own professional development internally, and that these people have stepped up. And the only other, the question that I had was, and it has to do with the enrollment, I know every year we make a decision, or we vote on, um, school choice positions. Can we just make that broad, like this year, to really open it up to everybody? Because I know every year, we, we sort of say, yeah, we can take a few kids in seventh, though, we can take a, so I think we just need to really open that up and say, come on, you know, we've got room for you, so, all right?
And then, I think it's on the calendar, the annual calendar, when it's.
I just wanted to say it now, while it's fresh in my mind.
You can put that in maybe on the December's agenda for that?
Yeah.
That'd be great, yeah.
Do it early.
I think it's on, um, one of, I don't know, one of the, I'll have to look and see exactly what it is.
I would say now, December 19th, we've got, we're getting phone.
No, but I think it is already bookmarked, I don't know if it's in January, February, because there's a deadline, when it has to be done.
Okay, yeah, people to make.
Last year, Colleen's saying it was April. I literally just looked at the document.
Is that like too late?
Is that when it's on, you know, the one that's the annual calendar? I think there's a, um, a date, because it could be, we can move it.
I know it's always been April.
Can we make it earlier? Yeah.
For enrollment, is there?
I don't know if there's a regulation, like a state regulation deadline.
There might be.
I think there's a deadline that it's submitted by, but if we want to vote on it earlier, I mean.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, if you can do that, that'd be great. Thanks, Michelle. That's it.
Very good, okay. So I, I really don't have a lot to say personally. One thing, well, just to be aware, there's a Fowler Concert for the fourth and fifth graders is 12, is December 17th. So, um, that will conflict also with one of the superintendent, um, dates, but.
So that's probably good that we don't have the CPAC thing on top of that as well?
Yeah, yeah, it is, it's, it is what it is, right? We, we do the best we can, but, um, we did, we were getting lots of kudos from NSDAQ, because we are, um, on track, because Lydia, I know Mary's done a lot of work, Lydia's done.
We're ahead of, we're ahead of track, actually.
Yeah, and that's just puts us in an excellent position for being able to consider these candidates, so. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, and, um, some of the stuff is just fun for me, and I recognize that it's not, I, I sometimes don't mention them anymore, because I love ideas. I get excited about ideas. We talked today, just today at work, we were talking about how we need to take ideas and give them form, and like, start, like, whipping them into shape. So, um, I have this thing called the Innovation Playlist from Teddy Ted, it's InterSmith? My friend is in, okay, so my friend is in education, and she's, um, so she passed this along to me, just as, because we like to geek out on some of that kind of stuff, and, um, and so I just thought, I don't know if it would be interesting to pass it along to the Curriculum Subcommittee, but it's like these, it's just a toolkit of different things you can do in different areas to kind of just play with innovation in the classroom and with students, and, um, and they're just like, pick up and try it, kind of thing, so, um, not that we don't have enough going on, but it was just kind of interesting and exciting, so I thought I'd pass it on to the Curriculum Subcommittee.
And that actually reminds me, so after, now that we have the superintendents, we need to schedule those, because that was the other time thing, um, January, we can, um, meet in, into the, the curriculum.
Curriculum, it's just strategic planning, is that what you, is? That would be with the, um, the superintendent and that too.
Yeah, I just didn't know what you were talking about.
I didn't know if you were thinking about, like, I don't know. Yeah, the Curriculum Subcommittee, what she was talking about.
Yeah, it's not called Curriculum Subcommittee anymore. Yeah, Strategic Planning, which includes curriculum, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, um, we have, um, Policies Subcommittee had to be rescheduled, because that was the exact time, we were supposed to meet at the time that the pilot, um, superintendent evaluation training was, so we're rescheduling that. And then, um, our next Communication Subcommittee meeting is?
I think it's coming up, actually.
Coming up?
I don't even know.
So, um, yeah, so we'll have those in order, and, um.
It's been a while.
And we'll have something to say about those next time around. All right, cool. Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
At 10 minutes of 9.
Wow. I know, that's what I want to get in.
Okay, was it, anyone want to second that? All in favor? Okay.